Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs. Today is January 15th, 2020. Right now, it is 8:50 PM. We call the meeting for order. Please all rise for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Could you please remain standing at a moment of silence for Army Special Forces Soldier, Sergeant First Class Michael James Godel of Westwood, who was killed while serving in Afghanistan recently? Thank you. Madam President, roll call, please.
Mayor Cranjack.
Here.
Councilperson Woo.
Here.
Sung.
Here.
Sabari.
Here.
Pharoah.
Here.
Aversa.
Here.
O, here. Municipal clerk, borough attorney.
Here.
DPW superintendent.
Here.
Everyone's present, Mayor.
Thank you. Would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice that this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you. We are still continuing the Borough Charity Project, which is the Office of Concerned Food Bank at St. Cecilia's Church in Englewood. There's a collection desk outside, a table. So if you have non-perishable food items, please contribute if you can. They're very grateful. I see them often, and they've been thrilled with how much food we've collected over the last several years.
Mayor, may I be recognized, please?
Sure.
I make a motion to change the seating order.
You're gonna sit outside?
Would you like to sit outside?
Where would you like everyone to sit? Because we actually have business to do, and... So, Councilwoman O is the Borough Council President, who is playing reasonable chairs right now. You need to tell them.
No, I don't.
Okay. And then I'll rearrange it, because I'm actually the chair of the meeting.
Yeah, I think you know that.
You know, between Ed finding that... Between Ed being able to be the timekeeper and you changing seats, I'm glad you all found something good to do.
Okay. Councilman Pharoah, Deborah Sabari, Gloria O. May I reiterate? You get to speak.
All right, get on with it, please. We actually have serious business to discuss.
Jimmy Sung, Councilman Aversa, and Councilwoman O.
Okay, so we actually have serious business. If you guys want to move, you can. If not, you can stay where you are. I really don't care.
We needed a second for the motion.
I second.
Only in favor?
Not at all, favor.
I have a vote.
And who seconds it?
I did.
Councilperson Woo.
No.
Sung.
Yes.
Sabari.
Yes.
Pharoah.
No.
Aversa.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
Okay, so for everyone at home, what you don't see right now is our audience snickering and laughing, because this is kind of childish by Councilwoman O.
Yeah. It wasn't childish when we did it four years ago.
Well, I am the mayor.
I understand, but I'm just saying.
We also had all new council.
It's funny. Sorry. How are we laughing? It's only childish one way, not the other.
You're here?
Yes.
Come on, Lori. Okay, so I'm gonna continue with business while the fun and games are going on up here. So, department head reports were handed out to all of the council, and if you have any questions on the reports, now's a good time to ask the borough administrator. And also, Mr. Neville, the superintendent of the DPW is here, so if you have any questions for him, you could ask him as well, so that he can go home. He's got a long day.
Can you make it a little more?
But it hasn't snowed, so you're...
Can you make it a little more?
It's a little cold in here. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Neville. Appreciate it. The correspondence, minutes from the signed-die meeting on January 3rd, 2020, have been circulated to the council for approval. If everyone's looked at them, and you wanna approve them, think now. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any objections?
I'm abstaining, because I didn't review it. It was in the back of an agenda. It wasn't sent as a separate document, right? Was it? Could I ask if going forward, we can have it as a separate file, so it's clear? I only caught it at the end.
Okay.
It was merged into an agenda, so I didn't see it.
Okay.
And I abstained, because I want to do it.
Okay.
So why don't I... Let me do the vote. Okay. Councilperson Woo. I didn't know the order. I'm sorry. If you wanna give me a minute, I'll...
Can you fix it and go this way?
You have to think of all of the next steps, Councilwoman O, when you make changes, so it would've been good for you to tell the clerk what the new order is.
Okay, so it's...
Pharoah Sabari.
I don't have enough of these.
Sung.
Thank you. Oh, no.
Aversa.
Thank you.
All right, so we're voting on the minutes of the signed-die meeting?
Yes. Councilperson Pharoah.
I abstained.
Yes.
I voted no.
Sabari.
Yes.
O.
Yes.
Sung.
Yes.
Aversa.
Yes.
Woo.
Stay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna open up to the public now, so I have a motion to do that.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, just raise your hand. Wait for me to call on you, and just talk to one of the microphones at the table here. You can have a seat, if it's scattered about, let's bring one back. I would encourage... I would encourage the public to focus their questions on important things. Affordable housing comes to mind. You know, also 2019, you've heard me say this before, and for people at home, Councilman Woo and I were shut out of the process. We haven't gotten information. We demanded it. We sued for it. We still haven't gotten it. At the November, at the December, and at the January reorg meeting, this council approved providing us with information. To this day, I have not gotten the information that I requested, and the professionals still are not sharing that information. So, you know, this is important for the public to know, because all these people are telling you one thing and doing another thing, okay? Anybody from the public? Yes, sir.
Just a reminder, we have a five-minute kind of problem.
Right, so Councilwoman O is in charge of seating, and Councilman Aversa is in charge of timekeeping.
Excellent. That's good.
Self-imposed duties in theirs, but they take very much pride in that.
I sent an email last week.
Name and address.
David D. Gregorio, 165 Charlotte Place. Good evening, everybody. I sent an email, I'm not sure if it was right into the record, last meeting. I looked at the tape, I did not see it, so I guess I will read it now. Last meeting, I couldn't be here, and I do apologize for that. As an Englewood Cliffs resident, I wish to congratulate the winners of the last election and wish them good luck. I ask this correspondence to be read into the record. I hope of all my heart our elected officials will represent us, all the residents of Englewood Cliffs. Elected officials will represent us in the following ways in 2020 and beyond. Disagree, but do so respectfully and based on facts. Two, see one another's perspective accurately. Be critical. Base criticism on business. Never get personal. Ever get personal. Modulate the voice. Be professional in response. Have courage to regret decisions that may not have been the best ones on both sides. Move forward in the spirit of goodwill and with a sense of excitement and innovation to try to win over those that may have a different opinion through respectful debate and facts. I regret some of my statements in the past and offer my apologies. Moving forward, I plan to strictly adhere to the four points above. Respectfully submitted, David D. Gregorio. I'd like to go on to 10 points that I wrote. I did post it on Facebook, Englewood Cliffs Moms and Dads, 10 questions that might be contemplated for our future and our children's future and Englewood Cliffs' future. I am an idealist. We all are privileged to be alive and breathing, and I refuse to waste my energy on anger and belittlement, and I think that we have the power, all of you have the power, to try to make this community better. We're not a one-issue community. All of us can work together on various projects. It doesn't have to be affordable housing only. I think we can multitask. Number one, leaves in the fall. Can residents consider having the leaves chopped, mulched, then used as topsoil on their own property, rather than place them on the road for pickup? Mark, I think, as Mark is gone. And can the town offer a tax incentive for those that do? Those leaves on the road can be a hazard, and to mulch really makes our land, Englewood Cliffs, the land in Englewood Cliffs richer, better nutrients, more oxygen, better growth of trees. Town dump, blowing in the wind. Can the town enclose the dump with a tall fence and sell keys to residents for entrance? This way, all the garbage is contained and not blowing into where the nuns live or up and down the road. Tall fence. This way, all is contained and limited to Englewood Cliffs. I've seen multiple, some people that I've recognized that have worked in town before, and I know they live in different towns. This is not the Englewood Cliffs dump. This is the Bergen County dump, and if you go there after a holiday, or if you go there on a weekend, it is a disgusting mess. There's toilets, there's paint, and I feel sorry for Mark's guys that they have to be greeted with this. We can sell keys to the residents. Every resident that wants to dump when it's not being picked up can open the door, put their things in neatly, and leave. No reason why any of this cannot be done in this town to improve everyone's life condition. Raise fines on littering and place signs, warning of high fines for littering violations at the town borders. Number four, this is important. Reality says we will have some sort of affordable housing in town. Every other Bergen County town has it. Most New Jersey towns have it. Can we stop arguing and start planning for it now, schools and otherwise?
Time, Mr. D. Gregorio.
Okay, just a couple more, and I'll be real quick. And we should make sure that this is all built well and not a fire trap, if we can, if we have the power to do that, if it's on the courts. Is there a possibility to allow some retail form of stores in town, grocery stores, whatever? Search for ways to provide our town, our own 912 education for students. We should really always be on the ball and looking around. Improve playgrounds and make them interesting and top-notch. Consider adding pocket parks throughout through house purchase and knockdown to encourage more outdoor play and socialization in neighborhoods. Work with PSCNG to bury our utilities and upgrade the entire infrastructure. Work closer with the Palisades Park Commission to better develop our greatest underutilized asset, Allison Park and the waterfront. I do appreciate the extra time. I do apologize for running over. Thank you very much. I hope you will take serious consideration in everything that I've said.
Thank you. I would never limit your time. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. First, at a meeting that began as late as this one, or in any public meeting, really, childish games like musical chairs are profoundly disrespectful to the people who have been waiting almost an hour for the meeting. It's just a complete waste of the public's time and very disrespectful. It's also extremely disrespectful to be withholding information from elected officials. Whether you agree or disagree, the public elected those people, and they have the right to have the same information that everyone else has. Finally, this week, I received a very disturbing phone call. It's from a resident who had spoken to someone who had been at a real estate closing, at which a member of this council was bragging of living in Jersey City but still being on the Englewood Cliffs council. Gloria O, do you live in Englewood Cliffs?
Under O, I could say I do not live in Jersey City. I live in Englewood Cliffs, so please do not spread a rumor. I work in Jersey City. I commute to Jersey City every day. But you have your information incorrect, Mrs. Eastwood.
Do you have a residence in Jersey City?
No, I do not. I just stated to you, I do not live there.
Okay, well, this resident was extremely concerned.
Okay, well, you know what, then? Why don't you give me the information of the person that is concerned, and I will deal with them.
That is what they are concerned about. One of the things they are concerned about and why they called instead of coming to a council meeting, that they will be dealt with. They have seen how other people have been dealt with.
Thank you. So we do, believe it or not, actually have a residency requirement. If you run for office and you sit on this governing body... How many times does she have to say she deserves it?
Why do I need to defend where I live there? You are accusing me of living in Fort Lee, Miss Eastwood. Your Republican municipal chair comes up here, and she is accusing me of living in Jersey City. To all the residents in Englewood Cliffs, I do live in Englewood Cliffs. I live on Irving Avenue, and these are false accusations. Thank you.
I didn't accuse you of anything.
Yes, you did.
No, no.
You asked me how's my commute from Fort Lee.
I never asked you.
Two meetings ago.
What I'm doing right now is for the people at home...
Don't lie. Okay, let's go along with the meeting.
No, you interrupted me. I'm gonna finish. Excuse me, ladies. There's people at home. We have a residency requirement for the governing body. It's very simple. You have to live in Englewood Cliffs.
You're wasting...
That's all I'm going to say.
You're wasting everyone's time by going into that, because no one lives outside of Englewood Cliffs.
Okay.
And everybody's aware of the residency requirement.
Anybody else? Anybody else wishing to...
I'd like to know if the clerk has received a rice notice regarding the award from the court on Oprah requests that Mr. Marinello again lost another case, and she's ordered to pay $2,500, of which the borough cannot pay for her and cannot reimburse her for. When you have a situation where somebody repeatedly gets cited by the court for not filling proper Oprah requests, and this is the second fine that she's received in 12 months. The previous one was $1,000. I don't know if it was paid or who paid it. I asked for it under Oprah, and I was advised that there were no government records of that type. So whether she paid it or somebody paid it on her behalf, I do not know. But now the fine is $2,500, and I was wondering, is this council gonna take any action and have a rice notice to the clerk to deal with the situation where the Oprahs are not being filled properly?
Mr. Marinello, was there a rice notice issued?
No, and I don't think it's necessarily proper for the council to comment on a personnel issue to that level without her having been rice.
Well, I'm just asking if she will be given a rice notice. I'm not asking to discuss or asking you to discuss the grievous faults regarding the Oprahs that are not being filled properly, but I'm asking, is this council going to discuss it? Are you giving the clerk a rice notice so that you can, as the governing body, discuss this? This is probably the only clerk in the state that received a $2,500 fine, and I think we're up to nine or 10 lost Oprah cases.
Well, you don't know how many other clerks have received...
I can't hear you.
You don't know how many other clerks have received that fine?
I believe there's only one.
Okay. So I did request the rice notice.
That's not true, actually. You asked me if we rice her, if I thought it was appropriate.
Well, you never got back to me.
Well, we had a discussion on the case in closed session, which is where it's appropriate to have that discussion.
Well, I believe it would be appropriate to have it in closed session, but I wanted to know if you gave her a rice notice, so you could discuss...
We did discuss it.
All right. So we'll have to wait and see if there's going to be any action taken by the council on this, because Oprahs that are being filled incorrectly with deficient information is not appropriate for the clerk to be filing. That's what I have to say. And I also wanna say that I do believe the council has to have the mayor and William Woo and now Mr. Pharoah receive the documentation that they're entitled to on the 800 Silvan and the fair housing, fair share, all the different elements of the affordable housing case. And I don't believe that any of the attorneys that are not doing it should remain in the employ of the borough when they do not follow the direction of the council. They do not run the town. The mayor and council run the towns. How many times last year did I hear the appropriate authority, that term being used? And the appropriate authority is this mayor and council. It's not the attorneys that should be directing the show that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard? Yes.
Couple of questions, Mr. Marinello. Some of them, I'm gonna ask if you could just give some answers to.
Can you speak louder, please?
Oh, sorry. Okay, so first, just some quick questions regarding resolutions and attorneys. And I saw on the resolutions that you are approving, you're not going into detail about the amounts that the attorneys are receiving, and you continually just keep amending it. I put Oprah's requests in several times last year for contracts. That's well aware that we need contracts on all of your vendors. I was never given one contract on any person that you hired last year. Not one. I don't even think that's allowed. You didn't have one contract. Okay, that's number one. I don't know how you're operating a borough without a contract, knowing what you are required to pay anyone.
Why am I not surprised?
So how would you know what you can pay them, what you're required to pay them, what their limits are? It's just an open cart blanch on all of your vendors. So I believe you need contracts for your vendors. So the entire year last year, you operated without contracts. Also, in the resolutions appointing individuals like special counsel, and again, I worked on this with Lizette when, 2016, you can't just appoint them as special counsel when you know they're working on specific matters. They have to be appointed, and there's gotta be a not-to-exceed amount. And that's not being done either. It's just a free-for-all of whoever wants to work on whatever, and you're just giving them special counsel. And I'm asking illegally if that's allowed. I've never, on my two terms, ever seen it be allowed, and that's also happening. I also put an Oprah in for closed-session minutes for the year of 2019, and the clerk told me you did not prepare and approve not one set of closed-session minutes again for 2019. You lost that suit last year, when I asked for the closed session minutes before that. Mr. Marinello, you know that.
I wasn't on that case.
Right, Mr. Wunsch was. And you don't have one set of closed-session minutes. The statute states minutes of meetings available to the public, which, and I'm just reading the last sentence, which shall be promptly available to the public.
Well, I'm sure all the public session meetings were available to you, right?
They don't differentiate on the types of minutes.
The closed-session minutes have to be separately approved.
It's a year. It's... They should be, because memory's faded, okay? So I just think you should really start being in compliance with what you need to do.
Well, they had a lot of litigation in 2019, a lot of discussion in closed sessions. So again, I'm new to this, so I can't imagine how we can give out minutes to closed sessions until these litigations are finalized. And even then, it's, I think we're gonna have to wait.
Some of them are, on the closed session, I mean, on the things that are ongoing, of course, it will be, you'll have to redact it, but you still need to prepare the minutes and pass them. So I'm just saying, it's been a year. I appreciate if you could just get your house in order and get that done. The other thing is, I reviewed the log of Mr. Wunsch, and I was disappointed to see how he's only copying certain people of this council and not others. And he's not supposed to do that. Every member of the council, whether he likes them or not, should be copied on the communications, and he's not doing that. His own log shows he's not doing that.
I don't think there's any requirement that he copy every council member on every email that deals with the borough.
Well, he's dealing with, he's giving advice, and if he's leaving Councilman Woo out, Mr. Marinello, I'm bringing this and making it...
There's definitely no legal requirement for that.
So you're saying it's okay to keep in from...
I didn't say it's okay. I said it's not legally required.
Well, he's keeping information, he has kept information from the council, and it's in his own log that he left Councilman Woo out at times. He left Mayor Cranjack out at times, and whatever his...
Rules don't apply to Al Wunsch.
Okay. I'm not gonna get it, I'm not...
He just... I don't know what particular emails your...
This council lets him do whatever he wants.
I don't, I'm just making a...
This council lets him do it.
Please don't raise your voice. It's not necessary.
This council lets him get away with that. Go ahead.
Every member of the council, so that they can make informed decisions on litigations or whatever the subject matters are, should be privy to all the emails. That's all I'm saying, bringing it to your attention. Okay?
Time, Mr. Wunsch.
I'm gonna finish, just like you did. Thanks. That's at there. And the other thing is, while you're in closed session, I have to say, there is a lot of litigation. There's a lot of litigation for a lot of different reasons. I was appalled by the language and the profanities that I heard Mr. Wunsch stating so loud, the curse words, "Well, I'm sitting right in that seat." It's not appropriate. It's not appropriate to use the...
Today?
Are you talking about today?
Yes.
We didn't hear it.
You weren't talking about today?
You weren't in closed session.
We were more profane.
We were there.
I was sitting there.
You were in closed session.
It was actually one of the calmest closed sessions we've had in a long time.
He was standing in the hallway right behind me. I'm talking about here.
Oh, so he was out here.
Oh, he was out here. Okay, I thought you were saying inside there.
No, 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 no. And they were really, really inappropriate, curse words, okay? Not just the normal.
We didn't hear it.
You're professional, please act that way, okay? It's really inappropriate.
I'd like our borough administrator to send us to Wunsch a letter to watch what he's talking about in a public forum. He's representing the borough as our attorney. We should not be using profanities. He's used them in closed session and he's got to stop. Anybody else?
I just heard, oh, sorry, enter 1022 Sarah Healy. I just heard what Carol said about this attorney, Wunsch, Ever Wunsch. I think I got an email from the recall committee, I believe, saying, it's a public email and stating that Ever Wunsch, on April 30th, 2019, there's a letter that he written to another attorney, I think it's a moment here, attorney. This is public filing. It says that, he said, "It is in everyone's interest that we have one hearing, not two, so that on the same night, the borough can vote on the authorization to sign the settlement and the adoption of the audience. This would eliminate the possibility that we have to vote to settle and then run into a problem with the adoption of the audience. The simple way to avoid this problem is to have both hearings on the same night." To me, I feel that he wants to make two meetings to one meeting. Why, right? He wants to make a rush and try to settle things and try to do things behind people's back quickly so people are not aware of it and it's already approved. For an attorney like this, sending this kind of letter, I don't know who instructed him. I don't have evidence who instructed him, but he is continued to be our attorney, right? Today's resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah? It's a, there's a resolution to, I don't understand anything about it, but it says resolution to not exceed amount for him, blah, blah. Apparently, he's still employed. For an attorney who does this to the township, the people of the township, residents of the township, can you guys just have a motion to fire him? Seriously? It's our tax money. I work hard to live in gold clips, pay the property tax. I don't want my tax money to be wasted on people like this, okay? And he's on the affordable housing hearing, what background he has? He can represent people like us to be in this kind of hearing? I'm furious. Can you guys just have a motion to fire him? Seriously?
I've asked for that. I tried to terminate him myself, but the Democratic majority of this council uses Al Wunsch. They weaponize him against, not only against me, but against the people of this borough. Because that letter that you read, at the very next meeting, Debbie Savari was asking to have that one meeting.
Excuse me?
Yes, you're asking for that.
Excuse me, you know that that's not even possible.
You were asking for that.
That you could not possibly have only one meeting.
We have to have a July 10th meeting, as you recall.
No, that's not true. That's not true.
You can rewrite all the history you want.
No, you know that legally that would never happen.
Let's not argue about that, but can we have a motion to fire Ever Wunsch? That's what residents want.
Counselor, where would you make that motion?
I would make, I actually made that motion just for your, I don't think you were here at the meeting in earlier January. I did make that motion and it was voted down. I think I'll make the motion again. And also, just for the record, both November, I made a motion for information between all of our attorneys and council people, communications. I have not received anything to date. I think at the minimum, just we're in the midst of some very important decisions and I think it would be fair if there's no communication to certify that you have nothing, particularly the Mount Laurel Subcommittee from 2019. That's all we're looking for.
Well, Cameron has worked on that. I personally don't have time to sit and pull out copies of all of my correspondence.
Oh, it's pretty difficult.
Mario-
I think it's pretty important. You were elected by our residents.
You sent out that- That was elected by our residents. And, you know, it's amazing the amount of work that has to go into trying to defend myself.
You're on your best, because you didn't give any of your information.
That's not true, Mario.
You did not.
We have asked Cameron to go through and give you all of the emails.
The only thing we accomplished last year was losing our immunity.
That's not true. That, you know, I'm not just on my fingers, Mario, but we know who's responsible for us losing our immunity and being in this situation at all.
When we were in control, we always had immunity.
Can we let the resident finish, please?
And also, I want to make the point that, because I just heard Carol said that Ever Wunsch still didn't copy emails to the mayor and the other two Republican council. I think, you know, David just mentioned that, you know, it's the time that we should unite and we shouldn't, you know, we should fight this whole issue together. And why this lawyer just purposely to exclude certain council members, right? Can he, if he refused to do that going forward, then why don't we fire him, right?
You know, I don't know what log Carol is talking about. We don't know what emails she's referring to. She's talking about a log. We are working together.
No, we're not.
We are working together.
No, we're not. You're working with Albert, but you're not working with us.
One last thing. He is paid by taxpayers' money, okay?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, West of Purina 220, February Avenue. I have to ask a couple of questions and this business about the information and lack thereof going to Mario, the mayor, Mario Kranjak, going back from last year, is an unresolved issue. And it seems that-
I'm sorry, I'm sure there's a vibrate button or a silence button on that phone of yours. Could you please hit?
It seems there's a pretty simple solution to this and we're skirting around the issue, but who on this council has the authority to direct Mr. Wunsch to stop withholding the information that has been not only requested, but has been passed by resolution by this council? You, as a whole, have voted to have that happen. From what I understand from the mayor, Mr. Wunsch is not, has not done that in any fashion, partial. Mayor, could you please explain?
Sure, I will. So Albert Wunsch takes direction from the Democratic majority. Oa versus Savari saw. Okay, so he takes direction from them. Now, under New Jersey law, NJSA 40A 60-5A, as a senior officer of this borough, as mayor, I have the power to direct him to provide information. I've done that. He hasn't provided any. But he violated that statute repeatedly. He's also violated his own code of ethics as an attorney admitted in the state of New Jersey. So now, what's seen the worst is that the judge that's hearing our case on the affordable housing litigation is aware of this. She knows. You know why she knows? I sued him for the information and it ended up in front of her. She doesn't care. She doesn't care that we don't, as a borough, have that information or as the mayor have that information.
Why can't we, this evening, get a personal affirmation from each member of this council that they're going to direct Mr. Wunsch to do this before, let's say, the end of this month, before the end of January? And let him come in here, appear at this meeting, at the dais, and explain if he did it or if he didn't. This is something that shouldn't be going on for six months, three months, two months. It should be very simple. And we've all faced Oprah requests and they're, some may say nuisance. This is not an Oprah request. This is a specific request for documentation that everyone in this council is eligible to get. So this is not just an Oprah request, you might say it's a nuisance, right? It's nowhere near that. And I don't say Oprah requests are nuisance, they're not. But in this case, it's a simple sharing of information that should have been given out all along. It's obvious to the members of the public that it hasn't been happening, so let's fix it. It's not so complicated. Can we get an affirmation from each member of this council that they would indeed instruct Mr. Wunsch to get this done before the end of the month? He has people that work in his office.
Yes, there's two different things we are asking for. There, what you're asking for now and there's what was approved at the last time this came up is a motion. Those are two different-
But they've been ignored, right? The resolutions, from what I'm being told, have been ignored. And that's an issue in itself, so it's time for something else to happen.
Yeah.
Because obviously, those resolutions didn't mean anything to Mr. Wunsch. So we can talk about why-
They didn't request Mr. Wunsch to do anything. They asked for, the motion that was approved was to provide the emails that were communicated between the council members and the attorneys on the affordable housing case to the mayor. That can be done and it's been asked for by the IT guy has been-
It all sounds so lovely when he says it, doesn't it?
So I'm going to ask you again, will each of the members, will each of the-
By the way, the original request, let me finish. The original request was for all communications, to and from attorneys and between our attorneys and our professionals.
Let me just-
And they don't want you to know, they don't want me to know.
The reason why the mayor doesn't provide it-
Joe Marinello doesn't want you to know what you're doing.
Well, we didn't get all requests either.
The reason why the mayor wasn't provided with this stuff was because the court said he wasn't entitled.
No, we got nothing, zero.
I understand what you're saying, I understand what the mayor's saying, but that's not what the court said, Carol.
You're saying the court said that the mayor's not entitled?
Yeah, the mayor sued.
Yes.
He just told you that, that he sued and a Judge Farrington ruled against him getting certain information.
My understanding was that she actually said that another judge in another court should be dealing with that, is what my reading of that decision was. I read her decision, Counselor.
I read it too.
It's Brown Robert. This is what the judge wanted to say.
Two judges that said it and the other one agreed.
But there's no question the mayor's entitled to information, just because Judge-
There is a question if Judge Farrington or Judge Fisher thought not.
I'm sorry.
I am the squeaky wheel. I'm the person telling them that this affordable housing scheme doesn't work.
My reading of that resolution, her decision, was that she was pointing it to another court. Mayor, is that fair?
Two parts, yes. Yes, and also what he said. She denied it. She pointed part and kept part.
Okay, but we have asked Cameron to get you all of the emails.
That sounds so lovely when you say that.
Cameron's, Cameron's-
He's our computer guy. All of a sudden, it takes him three months.
So can I just, I'm happy to go.
Because he has tons of Oprahs he's working on.
The public is not stupid. They realize that you guys are hiding information.
They realize it. I have nothing to hide.
So I can sit down, please? I would just like an affirmation from each member of the council that they agree that this information should be released by the attorneys to start with. That's very simple. It doesn't require time for Ms. Savari or anybody else, right? That's another part of it. Can I have an affirmation, Councilman Wu, that you agree that this should happen, it should happen immediately?
I agree that Attorney Al Wunsch should be releasing information correspondence with himself and the Mount Laurel Subcommittee, as well as our borough attorney, Joseph Marinello.
Thank you. Counselor Minerva.
I think that was voted on already.
It was.
Have you reaffirmed it personally tonight?
I didn't vote for it, so I'll vote the same way I did the first time.
Which is in the negative?
Correct.
That you feel the mayor should not be? Shouldn't get the-
No.
That's not what I said.
So what, could you reiterate, please, what you're saying?
I'm sure we don't cross lines here.
It's all games. It's all games.
He said that the mayor should get everything that he's supposed to get.
We already passed this motion.
I hear that, I say, these people are very smart. They see you deflect.
Okay, man.
Captain Sol?
Let me just say this. I get communication from Al and communication that I get, the mayor CC'd on. So I don't know if he's not doing or doing it, but all communication that I get from Al, the mayor gets, so.
But wasn't my question- Did you guys just tell Al Wunsch to do whatever you want?
No, I'm just saying from personal experience.
I understand, but my question is, again, do you agree that the mayor should be sharing these documents and that you're going to, as a group, affirm by majority that this should be done over? We shouldn't be, this is nonsense that we're even talking, have to talk about this. We should move beyond this to trying to solve the problems, but if you voted-
We did.
But there was, you know-
Being worked on. It's been-
How many months, though, do you think is reasonable for that to happen? After the case has been tried and settled?
We've asked all the information.
There's nothing more time sensitive.
You don't understand that he is on those emails, okay? He's leading you to believe that there's some massive amount of emails that we've hidden from him. That's not the case.
You're saying there were no emails from Al Wunsch here?
And you'll know that because there are all these Oprahs out there-
I don't know.
-asking for the same information and they'll see that there's nothing to hide. We are hiding nothing.
Well, there's a serious disagreement of truth here.
And that's okay, the truth will prevail.
I understand, I tell you, look, they're just continuing to perpetrate the same fraud that resulted in this.
There's no fraud here. There's no fraud here.
That MOU was fraudulent.
That was not fraudulent and you knew all about it.
Al Wunsch and Judge Serenian actually wrote it.
You knew all about it.
Hey, you know what? The borough shouldn't enter into this MOU. It should be the Affordable Housing Subcommittee instead.
I'm aware.
The council, the Subcommittee.
So, but my parting words are, this council is supposed to be working as a group and clearly, New Year's resolutions, whatever they be, nothing's changed, right? There are select few, there are select few that are getting more information than others. It's happened before, I believe it's happening still. I don't know, this is a fact-
It's not.
Except for what the mayor is saying.
Your assumption, but that is. Thank you.
That's not true.
Try working together. It really is not that difficult.
Mayor makes it very difficult, but we're trying.
We're not trying.
We are trying.
We're not trying at all. Don't lie to these people.
We are trying.
All right, thank you, Rob.
Again, our public is highly educated regarding this.
We know that, Mayor.
They know that you're not giving enough information. We've repeated it every meeting for the last nine meetings.
That would be a lie. You're copied on everything I've gotten.
Anybody else?
Aaron Geiger, 270 Alfred. Coming back to these meetings after not attending them just makes me realize that I shouldn't attend them because they're horrible. And the worst thing is the arrogance that you show, Mr. Mayor, towards every other elected official except those of your party. And there's not going to be any working together as long as you maintain your arrogant stance where you know better than everybody else, you don't listen to anybody else, and you say that the public is behind you. Well, the public is not all behind you. We have, many of us have significant concerns about what you are saying and what you're portraying as the truth, because those of us who follow it know that it is far from the truth. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. You actually touched on a very important point. The important point is, I recognize that the entire public is not behind me and that's fine, but that's not my choice. I am responsible to the entire public, whether or not they support me. And that's why I am fighting for this information, so even people like you, Ms. Geiger, although you may already know, will get the information, all right? That's the way it works. Anyone else?
Maria Valori, 45 Jane Drive.
Sorry, hold on, let's wait for Mr. Moens to finish speaking and Ms. Geiger. You guys done now? No, Mr. Moens and Ms. Geiger, you finished? There's another speaker here.
Okay, I'm just going to take a few minutes. It's kind of disheartening to sit here, meeting after meeting and listening to everything that goes on here. I watched Ms. So take time out of a meeting to rearrange nameplates, which makes no sense to me, but I'm sure she has a purpose for that, that, you know, she alone knows. It's bothering me that we are still, you've passed how many resolutions, was it three, to provide the mayor and Mr. Wu and now Mr. Farrow with information, which you haven't done? You hide behind the legal reasons why you can't release this and why you can't discuss that. And yes, Ms. Savari, you were, you are an elected official, absolutely. People in this town did vote for you, but people in this town voted for those other three people that are sitting up there with you. And you all have a responsibility to work together- And you all have a responsibility to work together for us, regardless of what our political affiliation is.
And I am.
Unlike, unlike Ms. Geiger who just came up here and had said it's us against you, okay, I'm saying that we need to get, oh, please don't interrupt while I'm speaking. If you'd like to address me afterwards, that's wonderful, but right now I'd like to get my thoughts finished, if that's okay with you.
Go right ahead.
Okay. You need to work together for the residents of this town, all of the residents, not just the Geigers and the Toffees and the Jamones and all the real important residents in this town, by the way, because we are worthless in regard to that big group. So, you need to work together. He is the mayor of the town. I cannot believe the talking over and the disrespect and not releasing information to him or the other people, not releasing information to us from Mr. Duffy. I've been there, Ms. Duffy, by the way, I worked in that, in that office, and I know exactly what goes on in those offices, okay? So, you all need to request that she puts out what is legally right to give people and not to stonewall them so that whatever agendas are going on are getting taken care of. I, we need, I need, as a taxpayer of this town, you've heard it from other people, we pay taxes, and for you to sit up there and say, well, we can't tell you this, oh, you don't know, well, we need to know. That's what you're elected for, to represent us and give us information, and that's what I demand from this board here. I don't want to hear, you didn't do this, I didn't do that, it's not my fault, you argue, you, no, I want to see you people act like adults and sit down and answer the people of this town who pay taxes, who are gonna suffer the consequences of your decisions. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to close on?
You got a hand up, let him hold my hand up. Yes, come on up.
Payment Meta, 75 Roberts Road. Last time when we are here. Can I give out, uh, this paper to Mr. Marinella?
Sure.
Make sure the clerk gets a copy of that.
Would you give one to the clerk, please?
Mr. Marinella, if you could, could you please read those?
No, I'm not reading it.
Oh, you're not reading it, okay, I'll read it for the people.
That's a, that's a better idea.
Yeah, okay. You were very quick to point out to Mr. Cetrubus that you were not here to basically let him know, and somebody told, said that he had gone to Columbia, and because he had gone to Columbia, he should really know everything.
I definitely didn't say.
Oh, you didn't say, I said, I said someone else, I didn't say that, that you said.
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, I said someone else, right?
I didn't say it, Mrs. Valari.
Uh, so I'm just gonna repeat, I didn't have that with me, because I hadn't come here prepared, but I know what I'm talking about here. Section F, this is the recall statute nineteen twenty-seven A eight F. Section F states, prior to use, the sections of a recall petition shall, I believe you are an attorney, so you would know that shall is mandatory, be reviewed by the recall election official for compliance with the provisions, as means plural, of this act. Of this act is the whole act, which is the entire recall election, and this recall election actually represents previous whatever was available. You made a statement that it was not Ms. Duffy's job to basically check whether it complies or doesn't comply, whether the recall petition which she had submitted complied with all the provisions of the act or not, and that's what he should have found out. And somebody else said that he has gone to Columbia and he misrepresented to the people. I don't remember who said that, but somebody from the council had said that. Now, in my opinion, and from reading this, Ms. Duffy rejected previous petitions, from what I understand, the first petition was because that there were two different petitions needed, so she rejected that. Then she rejected once again, a later time, that the front of that application was not big enough, it was not supporting for the statute. And then she gave the approval stating that now you have hundred and sixty days, I have all the documents here.
She didn't say that.
Oh, she didn't, so she wrote it, that you, you have hundred and sixty days, I have the application, you want me to read it?
Well, you're good at that, you could try it, go ahead.
Okay. So, no, because I have an artificial deadline of five minutes. So, so he, so he has said that hundred and sixty days, that you have hundred and sixty days to bring back the signed petitions, and I'm talking in my simple language. When she gave that approval, one was on August sixteenth, another one was on August twenty-sixth. But she had also written a letter to your office. On the sixteenth, this document was produced to Mr. Cetrubus under the Oprah, which I got Okay, so she wrote on August sixteenth at four thirty-seven PM to Jason Bonica and Joseph Marinella. And she told you that Sabrina confirmed binding question must be submitted to county by August twenty-seven by the borough clerk. I just did some reading of the statute and did some rough calculations. Even after Mr. Cetrubus or whoever the petitioners were, they submitted this, their, let's say, signed petitions, you guys would still have twenty-two days before, if everything was passed, and it was never passed anyway, but if everything passed, I'm gonna complete my listing.
We're not a force of the time.
Okay.
Yeah, we are.
Mr. D. Gregori went on fifteen minutes.
So, so.
You could share your thought, Mr. Metta.
Okay, I'm just gonna complete this.
One minute.
I'm listening, wait, one second. So, so he, on August sixteenth and August twenty-sixth, when she gave them the approval, approved petition, according to this, the next day was the cut off date for this petition binding question to the county. That means, did she check that it was provide, what do you call, in compliance with the provisions of this act? Because the same provisions of the act provides minimum twenty-two days as required before it can go to the county.
Mr. Metta, you've given me one section of that statute, and you're asking me to provide a legal.
I'm not asking you to provide legal action. No, 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 I am not asking you, I am just informing the people, basically, that you guys are working hand in glove, and that's why the circus is gonna continue, nobody's gonna get any documents, because you three people were hired on the same day, January third, she had an administrator, and you two guys.
It wasn't hired on January.
Okay, so you, not you, then Mr. Wunsch, and basically with one objective, to make sure no information flows to the people, everybody, everything is used against the people, okay? Thank you.
You summed it up very well.
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Cetrubus, fifty-four Hickory Street, um, I have a question for Ms. Oh, please. Did you recently start a new position with another borough, under a capacity of an attorney? Any borough, Palisades Park, perhaps?
Why do you ask?
I'm just, I think the public should, I think if it's, if it did happen, it should be public knowledge, and the public should have a right to know, that's all. I think it's a fair question.
Something that I don't know?
I'm just asking if you did.
I put in for an RFQ, I did not get a response to that.
Okay, to, to which borough, please?
I submit RFQs in multiple forms, so if you have any specific questions, I answer.
Yeah, I'd like to know if you're working in any capacity as an attorney for the borough of Palisades Park?
Um, last year I did, I was the backup planning board attorney.
All right, thank you very much, and I have another question for, congratulations for that, I'm sure it's a very lucrative position. I'd like to know how I can, uh, get a lucrative position like that as well. Probably, you're right, you're right. So, I can advise other attorneys that I may know, that's all, not from me personally, it's not disrespectful, I'm just asking a question. Mr. Song?
I'm sorry, this is something that you have to.
Please don't interrupt me, please don't interrupt me at this point, I'm finished.
I don't see the relevance of this question.
Please, please, please don't interrupt me, I'm, I'm through with the question, thank you. Mr. Song, my next question is for you. Um, I think the public should have a right to know, did you start another position under the capacity of an attorney for the borough of Palisades Park?
I'm a public defender, I haven't had one single assignment yet, um, it's not very lucrative, um, just so, you could, you could look for yourself how much public defenders.
What do they get, like five thousand, eight thousand?
Nevertheless, you get something, you get something, right? You get something. But I'm sure he does, I'm not saying that he does it.
That can't afford attorney, and they have a ticket or criminal matter in Palisades Park, just let them know.
Let's just be clear, though, it may not be lucrative as an assignment, but it does create a business development opportunity for everyone in that role.
I have two little kids, I would welcome the business opportunity.
I, I'm sure you do, Mr. Song, I'm not, I'm not saying anything, Mr. Song, what, what I am saying, though, is, is when the public approaches you, please, please don't interrupt me, when the public approaches you and asks you to be objective, right, which I think that we have pretty much spent far more hours than anybody up here has spent, that's, that's a fact. We have reverse engineered everything that's going on with Eight Hundred Sylvan, okay? We have a very good idea of what's happening. I think that we drew you a pretty good roadmap for the past several months and asked you to be objective, not, not just you, every single one of you. And we don't see that happening, so when you're up there quietly just voting against the people, when you know what the people's will is, Mr. Marinella, you're shaking your head no, but I don't think that that's, I think that's pretty much the case.
I'm allowed to shake my head.
I know, I know, but.
I'm not even doing it this way this time.
Congratulations, I'm, I'm glad you can do that. So, when the people are asking you and you're voting against them, I think that the public is intelligent enough to question your motives, so we're just gonna keep digging a little bit deeper, right? I think that that's a fair.
Please dig, do all the digging, please dig, please.
That's, Mr. Versa, now you're grandstanding, sir, so please be a little respectful, I'm not threatening anybody, yes, you are, sir. Mr. Versa, please be a little bit respectful, I'm addressing Mr. Song, not you, thank you very much.
I stick up for my people.
I, I understand, but can you say?
Only resident here.
Can you let me know when you're finished, sir?
All right.
Are you finished, Mr. Versa? Shall I continue, sir?
Oh, you sure may.
Thank you very much, so please, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not addressing you, so just be a little respectful.
They're looking at me.
Well, I'm asking you to stop addressing me.
You are addressing me.
He's trying to distract me.
Stop addressing me.
With that being said, Mr. Song, I'm asking, uh, for you to please be a little bit more respectful of the amount of time and effort that we have put in to figure out what's happening. And, uh, that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Line Writin', Nine Willa Drive, well, I'm so glad the campaign season has begun again, because I think that's what I'm hearing here, the people, the people, some people, not all the people. I'm very happy to have them making decisions for me, because I know that we have expertise in this committee that's hard to find in other places, and I think they're doing a great job, and as far as not getting information, Mayor, boy, do you sure have a short memory. When you and Anne Marie and some of the other council people kept all of the information from the other side, it was okay. Ellen had to sue and wanted it to take a year or more for her to get her information, so you know what, it happens. And as far as these people have voted on it, why do we have people from the audience interrogating them? They're doing this day in and day out. Let the council do their jobs.
That's pretty funny.
Uh, people, please address the council if you have anything, we don't really want to start a riot here.
You should know the history, Lynn.
Okay, all right, enough of that.
Control the meeting, mayor.
Anybody else? Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? I thank all the speakers this evening, whether or not you supported me, it's good to hear from y'all. Uh, give a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, payment of claims, resolution twenty dash thirty-four, January fourth, twenty twenty, through January fifteenth, twenty twenty, the amount is two million, five hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Uh, so I object to any dollar amount being paid to the following within that number, 'cause I don't have a list with me. Serenian, Piazza, Harbor Consultants, Ruderman, Wunsch, Marinella.
Motion to approve resolution twenty thirty-four, payment of claims in the amount of two million, five five three, five thirty-seven, fifty-two.
I second that motion.
Here, welcome.
Counselperson Farrell.
Oh, I'm against paying those lawyers that the mayor just mentioned, but everything else, yes.
Yes.
Oh?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Wu?
Uh, for the record, we paid about two hundred and twenty thousand, not including Ruderman, uh, in the month of January, uh, sixty-two thousand dollars to Al Wunsch, seventy-eight thousand dollars to our litigation lawyer, um, sixty-four thousand to Serenian, um, and another twenty thousand to, um, apologize, I don't have that here, but it's about two twenty total, so, no.
No.
No to the payment of claims.
Resolution of twenty twenty, uh, thirty-five.
May I point a moment?
Yes.
Um, maybe, maybe this will help a little bit, if, uh, can I, I wanna make a motion to change the Subcommittee members. I wanna make the motion to put, um, the mayor, just wanna get all the information you want, do a move, and Ramon Farrell.
Now, we, we agreed to have no Subcommittee, we're gonna have the council, the governing body.
I'm making a motion, if no one wants to second, that's up to.
I'm gonna motion.
That's fine, do whatever you want, but the governing body is what's been elected here, and the governing body needs to step up. You know what's interesting about the seating arrangement that Gloria picked? She's the Borough Council President, but, and you should be sitting at the end, you should be leading and making those good decisions, but you didn't put yourself.
You know what, mayor, when, when you had the control, the council president did not sit over here.
I don't vote.
So, you know what?
The floor is the second, we call for a vote, please.
Well, tell us about the Subcommittee.
I think it should be.
Here's the way the Subcommittee works.
It's very simple.
Look, you guys wanna have.
No, I tried to get a special meeting together, no one responded.
You guys, you wanna create committees, but you don't wanna actually do the work.
Get all the information you want, Mario.
We didn't, we don't create the committee. I, I want all the information that I haven't been given, first of all.
Listen, I just, Mr. Peru, I'm listening to you.
You're also the guy who just voted no to give the information.
Well, now you can get all you want.
Well, make up your mind.
I just made it up.
Make up your mind.
I want to be on it, or, that's, that's the most you're on the floor, then the second.
I have a second.
Thank you.
I wanna pass on the very large.
Can't have the organs called out.
It's not rocket science.
It's not rocket science, we can fix this problem, but we need honesty here, okay? That's what we need.
There you go. Motion is second on the floor, pick a roll call.
Well, can we combine that motion with a motion to terminate Lunch, Serenian, Troutner?
If you run the subcommittee, you could do whatever you'd like.
No, we can't, actually.
Well, you could present it.
That's what you did. That's what you did.
It's like we did shape.
So let me, let's, so everybody understands, so we can vote on it, it's fine, but in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, let me say-
It's fine, it's very important, you don't want to-
Absolutely, no, 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 we'll, we'll do it, it's fine, hold on, I just want everybody to understand at home and here, that, well, we had a subcommittee before this Democratic majority came in, they worked very hard, and no one's crying about anything, except you.
You didn't have a subcommittee.
Uh, we had a subcommittee, we had an affordable housing committee, okay, call it the fifth day.
No, you didn't. Stop it, Terrell. It was your attorney, so goddammit, the subcommittee-
I'll let me finish, will you? I know what you're thinking, you don't know what I'm saying. You're right, you're wrong. Uh, look, here, here, we had a committee that would always bring back, Mr. Mills and Ms. Geiger, please listen, this is important for you, because you ride all the tracks.
No, everybody on this side has been talking all night, and you said enough.
What we did was, we always brought all the decisions that had to be made back to the council, as you recall, we had endless special meetings in two thousand-
No, you didn't, actually, we did.
Look at the records. In, in the regular session- Look at the records, those sessions, we did. We, we did everything back-
That's not true, I have the minutes.
Callic Laurel worked very hard in that committee.
I have the minutes, Cal.
Ross Perino worked very hard.
That's okay, now.
You could live in your little political machine fiction, but you drew up last year, and you want to use all-
You drew up, well, you own control.
I-
We're giving you the opportunity to take control, 'cause you said that you have a plan, and you're gonna save it, let's see it.
I have five being the leader, you're not.
Thank you, God, no, I'm, I'm fine with the job that I'm in.
You were fine with what you did last year.
Absolutely not.
This is a motion on the floor, a second, can we please take a vote?
I didn't, I didn't, uh-
Who's your subcommittee?
I, I, you.
Subcommittee is gonna be you, um, Bill Wu, and Ramon.
Oh, look at that.
You're gonna have all the information that you need, you have your information, that's what you wanted, I'm telling you, you get all you want.
And where's Mr. Park?
I can't accept, um, participating in subcommittee, because I've said all along, I think it should be the whole mayor and council participating, I, I tried, I made a, I made a motion, I made a motion to bizarre, the subcommittee last year.
You need a subcommittee, because it takes too much, because you can't get the council together every single time.
Al Lunch needed a subcommittee.
No, actually, it was Serenian who recommended the subcommittee.
Al Lunch needed a subcommittee, he defended Robert Stamp, everything they said.
Listen, you're not even on the council, you don't even know what you're talking about.
First of all, folks, I sit on every committee anyway, okay? As mayor, I am on every-
No, if there's a committee of three, you cannot attend if the other three five members are on it.
You can't attend, but you don't follow the rules.
No, if we could have three, and then you can't attend.
You don't follow the rules.
Do you not wanna, do you not wanna chair this committee?
Of course I do, I wanted to make this council work the right way for the-
You seem to think that you have a plan to save Eight Hundred.
We did, and we went over it in a closed session.
We're giving you part blind, go for it.
You were agreeing with me in a closed session.
Go for it.
Now you're like washing your hands, no, no, you're staying on this council.
We still control.
The vote is on, you'll vote on the floor, please.
Can I take a vote?
Call it all you want.
Counselperson Sparrow?
No.
You ran, you ran, you ran on that, you're gonna solve the problem, now you don't wanna solve the problem?
You're not throwing, you're not going to throw it at me.
What a setup.
You're not going to throw it at me right now.
I actually do-
Savari?
My, 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 yes.
These people are enough anyway, so let me just take a-
Oh, yes. Song?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Woo?
No.
All right, well, listen, folks, this should be the whole mayor and council.
All of us, ultimate lane, this is all of us, though, all I'm gonna do, folks, not gonna call special meetings over and over. You don't realize that, it was just you and Cal who ran the show.
I didn't realize that. Good shot. We're not allowed to special meetings, there's other calendars, okay?
Now that we have the, uh, committee, the control of the committee, and we fire the lawyer-
Yeah.
You can ask the council.
No, 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 you can, you can, you can fire, you need counsel, you need the council to go along with it, you can't, you can't do what they did, we're better than that, we can't do what they did, we're better than that, we follow rules.
You can't fire your attorneys without having replacements.
But they're replacements, you're not okay, that would mean you got nothing.
You present us with attorneys, and we will look at it and replace them as current attorneys, if that's what you choose to do.
Have a motion to terminate Al Lunch right now, please.
I make a motion.
All right, second?
Second.
Let's have a roll call.
Yeah, it's a roll call.
The vote was done, Mr. Dever. This is a, a motion to terminate Al Lunch from all positions, it's moved by Councilman Sparrow, and it was seconded by Councilman Woo, let's have a roll call.
Can we do that without a replacement there, the board attorney?
No, he's, he's in the middle of a few things right now, but I am, he's special- I'm not against, I'm not against putting him on future-
There's a motion on the floor.
Okay, if the motion is gonna be to fire him right this minute, I'm gonna have to vote no.
No, 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 you should vote yes, because he's the special counsel, and there's other people that he's working with, so let them do the work.
Well, that's not true.
I have to vote, please.
Okay.
Yes or no, straight up, yes or no?
If I have to answer today, it's no.
You're waffling.
No, I'm not waffling.
Now you're waffling.
I told you, present a replacement for all of the attorneys, and we will back-
One at a time, that's all.
No, no, you want games, let's, let's start with the first step, cleaning house, okay?
No, he is, he's an attorney on several different litigations.
It doesn't matter, he's getting nowhere in any of them.
It does matter, it does matter, and you know that, as an attorney, you know that.
Mr. Marinello is still here, you could, you know that.
Mr. Marinello was appointed by the, uh, the council by, uh, for year twenty twenty.
Al Lunch is special counsel, okay? And everyone he works with-
He's working on several cases right now.
Look, we were in a closed session, and everybody that he worked with was actually doing all the speaking, he's just there to bill.
That's not true.
Yes.
That's not true, so again, if you bring in a replacement for those things that he's working on, I will entertain it, right now, if you're saying fire him tonight, the answer's no.
It's a yes or no, you voting no?
It's no.
All right.
Uh, when I go to you, council, uh, councilperson Sparrow?
Yes.
Councilwoman Savari?
No.
Oh?
Um, for the same reasons stated by Councilwoman Savari, I vote no.
Song?
No, but I'll support the mayor if he finds a replacement.
Well, that's what we said.
You don't need it right now.
Yes, we do, we have seven litigations.
We will find a replacement.
Okay, it doesn't matter, just take the vote.
So you, you guys aren't brave enough, are you?
You guys, well, you know, if you know what you're doing, where are the attorney replacements?
You have a replacement, you have a replacement.
Where are the replacements?
You find a replacement, and I'll go along with it as well. You don't need it, you already have it.
Just for the record, everything he's working on, he's not the lead counsel on anyway, his other lawyers, he's just there to bill, okay?
That's, that's not true.
He is the political payback.
That's not true.
He's been paid over two-hundred thousand dollars this year, or last year, right?
Aversa?
I said no, same reason.
Woo?
Yes.
Okay, so now you have a subcommittee that you think you created, uh, that doesn't have an attorney that you can work with.
You, you are more than welcome to present to this council replacement attorneys, Mayor. If you're sure that somebody else can do a better job, who are they? Where are they? Present them.
Listen, I'll work with Joe Marinello.
You know that the judge will never let you replace Serenian.
I'll work with him.
Well, at the last meeting, you wanted to fire him.
Well, I would, I, I, well, you know, in terms of hierarchy, who's a fire, I'll fire you after him, but not right now. I don't want the job, thank you.
Well, you're the Borough Council, so you're stuck in that job.
I'm not affordable.
So what just all happened is, they refused to actually do the right thing.
No, we didn't, we refused to do it this evening, and we need to find a replacement.
Let's do an RFQ then.
I get it.
You can do that.
For special counsel, who else is in our roster? We actually approved people already, especially, who else is approved?
I think Climina Luffy.
I think that's, it's just two people, one other, no.
Yeah, we didn't have a whole roster.
Why don't we look at what Mr. Munch is working on, the attorneys that he's working with, and figure out what we need. Let's take Mario Bye, the special litigation counsel.
You can't just do that, Mayor, you gotta go out to-
He responded to an RFQ.
No, not with that position.
Again, I think we need to look at what Mr. Munch is working on, and-
Well, you didn't do an RFQ when you hired Munch.
And if we need.
You didn't do an RFQ when you hired Munch.
I believe we did.
No, you didn't, you just picked him up, because you were told to do that.
No, he was hired as a special litigation.
You did respond to your-
No, he didn't, he didn't, uh, respond.
Now, we're trying to work with you here, Mayor, let, let's move on.
Yeah, let's move on.
Oh, Cal, no, if you want us to have a subcommittee, then we need, we need a professional that we can work with, okay?
Okay, so finally, we have two professionals, Serenian and Troutner.
So, so here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna work directly with Serenian and Troutner, we are not gonna work with Munch.
That's the committee's option.
We will not work with that man, ever again, period, done, all right?
That's the subcommittee's option. Fair enough.
You can do it. Can the council approve advertising with the special litigation council, just so we have it?
You wanna make that motion?
Well, we have somebody else on the special litigation, right?
Just, uh, you have one's a better, I'll just have something ready.
Just have a roster of people.
Okay, you're gonna have to go after RFQ again.
That's what we're doing, right? You can make the motion for the special litigation council. We'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion for an RFQ for special litigation council.
All right, let's, let's get a-
A second.
All in favor?
All right. Anybody against?
We just have a pool.
Anybody abstaining? Yes, love it.
Uh, can I also make a motion, uh, Mayor, um, I know at the last meeting, we had, um, held over a labor attorney for thirty days, can we also add that onto the RFQ?
I think we received RFQs for labor council, I don't think you can go back out and have RFQs in that you just haven't acted on.
We, uh, you know what, let the clerk act that what we have, and if we have a special meeting, um, in some time in the future, before the next regular, we'll deal with it. All right, can we do the resolutions, thirty-five, approve mutual aid and rapid deployment force? Uh, I, I just had a question, Joe, and it was, uh, there's a reference to, um, cooperating with the Bergen County Police Association to create the inter-local services agreement, which, you know, I'm fine with the agreement, and I'm fine with mutual aid, what I don't understand is why, um, why is an association that we're doing this with rather than a governmental entity? It's, you actually look in the resolution itself, also, that we were seconded.
It's a resolution that the police association puts out every year to all municipalities.
Right.
It's not just any-
I know, I, I think we did it last year.
They create the form that we're supposed to follow, is that what they're doing?
I think they create, they create the, uh, they're instrumental in getting the municipalities together to be part of the mutual aid program, and it is a form necessarily.
So, so they work on it with our chief, and then they present it to all the-
With the police chiefs association, yes.
With our borough chief, and then they, they present it to all the towns that are participating?
They ask them to participate, too, that's kind of what this is.
I'll file with that.
A mention over here, mayor and board of committees, mayor and board of, choosing that be, uh, mayor and Borough Council?
It's a, it's, it's a template that they use, I could change that, that's-
Choosing it to be, uh, we're going to-
Why don't we do this, why don't we try to approve this with the change where committee should be council?
That's fine.
All right.
Can I ask a question to the borough attorney, just, are there any ongoing costs to our town for this?
I don't believe there are any.
I don't think so.
This is just general housekeeping, it gets done at the beginning of the year, that's it, just to have it in the box.
All right, um-
Subject to changing the word committee throughout to council, Borough Council, not Borough Committee, do you have a motion? So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Anyone abstaining? Okay, we got that one. Uh, thirty-six, authorization to enter into agreement with Riverside Cooperative. I just had a quick question, it references the Borough of Northvale as a purchasing agent, so they're the-
Lead.
They're the lead, okay, all right, so moved? So I can, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nope.
Anyone abstaining? Uh, tonnage grant application, number twenty dash thirty-seven, this one, I just had a quick question on the resolution itself, um, there's a reference to a dedicated recycling trust fund, okay, must have balanced it.
I have to give you that one.
All right, all right, so that's the only question I have.
If you wanna do thirty-seven, thirty-eight, it kinda, it, there's a cost, it costs you.
Yeah, so thirty-eight is a tonnage grant application, um, again, it references tonnage rates on our solid waste disposal, um, do you have a motion for thirty-six and thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Uh, thirty-nine is the LESO ten thirty-three program, uh, and this is resolution authorizing the Borough of Eggwood Cliffs through the Bergen Police Department to participate in the Defense Logistics Agency Law Enforcement Support Office ten thirty-three program, to enable the Borough of Eggwood Cliffs Police Department to request and acquire excess department of defense equipment. Now, I'm fine with this, uh, as long as it's not, um, military-grade arsenal that we're getting, and when I looked at the list that was attached, there, there were some hand grenades and, and that was mentioned, so with the, with the provision that we are only getting, um, civil law enforcement products and equipment-
That, that, just to clear it up, we did it last year, it's, uh, beginning of the year, housekeeping, that's the form that they supplied as, as a template, so I thought That's the form that they supplied as, as a template, so I thought I would include it and include it in the resolution.
Okay. Alright, no, uh, no hand grenades.
May I have a motion?
So move?
Second.
Okay, um.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Anybody abstaining? No, okay. Resolution twenty dash forty, award twenty twenty contracts for pruning and removal.
So move.
Um, second, who are we rewarding? Reliable chief, sorry, this is being appointed.
Yeah. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Anybody abstaining? Resolution to hire public work employees, public works employee.
So move?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Um, so, uh, forty-two, uh, this is amending the not exceed cap of nineteen dash two-two eight for Jeffrey Serenian. I oppose this. Motion to approve?
You play an opposing role.
With one, we can do them all together, forty-two, forty-three, uh, forty-four, forty-five, and forty-six. Uh, I oppose all of these not exceed, increase caps for, uh, Serenian, Keyes, Harbor, Ruderman, and Wong.
Remove it?
So move.
Okay, I'm gonna do them all together, so go on. Um, second, please?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No. No.
I got, I know.
You're not. Not at all.
I thought, I thought he was objecting.
Alright, we'll do a roll call.
It'll be the same for everybody.
Yeah, sorry, we'll do a roll call.
Yeah, yeah, for, uh, Councilperson.
So just, I'm sorry, just to be clear for the record, so this is a roll call of forty-three, forty-two through forty-six. Alright, you got a, a, a motion, you got a second, and I'm doing a roll call for all of them.
Correct. But I wanna do a one vote call first.
That's fine.
Councilperson Farrow?
No to all.
Savari?
Yes to all.
Oh?
Yes to all.
Song?
Yes to all.
Aversa?
Yes to all.
Woo?
No to all.
Forty-seven, approve emergent shared services agreement between the Borough, uh, and the Pathway Interstate Park Commission. I think that's what it should be.
Yeah.
Second.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Forty-eight, authorize home harmless agreement for five-thirty Summit Street, George Menegatos and Marissa Menegatos. So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone?
Mayor, can I make a motion? Uh, I wanna make a motion to, uh, fire Al Wunsch as it pertains to his role, um, as special litigation counsel for affordable housing.
Second.
Didn't we do this?
No, this is narrowing the scope, uh, because I think a couple of you mentioned that he's working on a lot of different things. This pertains, we, I'd like to, um, let go of Al Wunsch, or fire Al Wunsch as our special litigation counsel as it pertains to affordable housing.
My second.
So a roll call?
So this is move? Okay. Councilperson Farrow?
Yes.
Well, this is gonna be going against the recommendation of our existing counsel, Serenian and Troutner, who says that he's needed on this case, but I'll go along with it.
The Borough needs him, Mayor.
Oh?
Again, Mayor, I'm going against the recommendation of our professionals.
Uh, so what is the motion? To fire Al?
I have a motion to fire Al Wunsch from special counsel as it pertains to affordable housing. No. Song?
No.
Aversa?
I'm gonna say no also, just, uh, until you find somebody to replace him or get the other counsel.
Well, we have Serenian and Troutner.
I understand.
We're not gonna replace him.
Okay.
We're not replacing him.
That'll be your fault, I understand.
No, no, it's a council's call, but we are not replacing him. We have Serenian, and Serenian did all the work for two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, and it was only you guys who decided that Al Wunsch needed to pay off.
That's, that's not true. That's, that's not true, again.
Let's finish the vote.
Serenian and Troutner have made a very clear to this council and Mayor.
Finish the vote.
That, that he was needed.
Finish the vote.
Councilman Woo?
Yes.
Mayor, since we're in the talk?
This might be my, uh, most favorite vote ever, say yes.
Pass.
Alright, will you tell tonight? Thank you.
He's anxious to tell me.
Right?
You need to know, but he's not willing to.
You don't wanna personally tell him?
But, you know, just, we need to be clear. He's just stopped work. He damaged this borough enough, okay? You didn't hesitate to fire Amory last year on the dying of the light. Committee council member reports, oh, yeah, and when you ask him, just count the defendant all the records.
Well, let's not, let's not be nasty about it. Can we just, you took a vote.
Records to you.
Well, I really don't think that you should be screaming out from the audience, Mr. Yee.
Thank you.
You did run, and you weren't elected.
Wow.
Uh, he doesn't need to sit there and tell us how to handle business up here.
So we, um.
I want residents.
That's okay. The resident was trying to dictate how we operate.
Stop it. Uh, so we need one more RFQ, um, I'll let, uh, the clerk explain.
Hi, I'd like to have an RFQ to go out for a leaf pickup. I just wanna start it a little bit earlier this year and see if I can get a better price. Now, that's okay. I mean, last year, we, we budgeted $60,000 for leaf pickup, and I thought maybe if, if I can get it done earlier, more people will apply.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Everyone's okay?
Okay, yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Alright, committee council member reports, does anybody have a report? If you do, state, uh, your committee and your report.
Well, uh, I have the planning board, uh, the reorganization meeting took place last Thursday, and, uh, I have the Borough Health, uh, and the reorganization meeting took place Monday, and I just wanna remind everyone that owns a cat or a dog to make sure you've registered them. And those are the two, and then I have the lighting, which I start, I have to start going around and checking on the lights.
Alright, thank you for doing that, appreciate it. Mr. Savari?
I don't have a report at this time.
Are you running a subcommittee? Councilman Al?
I don't have a report. Are we having any, uh, meeting on the lighting company?
Chris is, Chris is working on it now.
What's on?
Not at this time.
What committee is yours? You have several.
I have several, DPW Economic Development, we use it on to Board of Ed.
Okay, so on DPW, you need to talk to, uh, Mr. Neville about, um, the future of leaf pickup and the vacuum trucks, he's getting some bids, and I think you've got some, you got some information, but I think, uh, I need you to be active on that committee, okay? Because we're getting, um, a lot of pressure to pick up these leaves for mulch.
And the mulching, yeah.
Which is, I guess, mulching works, mulching works, I'm fine with it.
But, uh, make sure that, Steven, Mayor, uh, the dust, when you do the mulching, just to make sure that it's sealed.
I, I wanna save the $60,000, we don't have a location.
Well, I think the resident, that, that you mulched in your own property.
On your yard, yeah. You don't put the leaves out for pickup.
Tax credit.
I don't know what the tax credit.
Thank you.
Councilman Aversa, on the next one, other than plant keeping, anything to report on?
Plant keeping. Recreation, um, we, I have a meeting on Friday with, uh, Borough Administrator to try and organize the coming schedule for recreation, so, and we've, basketball's already running fairly smoothly, we're trying to grow them, and, um, and, uh, police, we are set for mediation on.
February twenty-eighth?
February twenty-eighth, I think that's the call. And that's it. Councilman Al?
Nothing on, uh, historical or beautification.
Mayor, may I have water? I'd like to make a motion to create a resolution to put the Mayor Parisi's name back on Borough Hall.
It's there already.
Can I get a second?
It's, it's there already.
I would like to.
Was that by the videographer?
That you have removed.
Pretty funny.
I don't understand what's funny about it.
The history of that.
Well, here we go. There's a motion on table. Can I get a second?
I second that motion.
There's discussion going on.
After the second, you can discuss.
You didn't second yet.
I did.
So here's the thing, we had a mayor's name on Borough Hall, and I think we were the only town in New Jersey that.
That's not true. That is not true.
After individual, and not after the town.
No, that is not true.
That would be a lie, again.
Palace Street's court had it, and they took it down to like you.
There's a memorial park for Mayor Parisi, okay? There's, um, stones at the other park with his name on it, uh, there's a veterans memorial with his name on it.
There's stones with the mayor's name on it.
And then there's also, uh, within Borough Hall itself, there's a plaque when you walk in.
Again, there's a motion on table.
How many names?
I second this.
To put this sign back up, you took down, and I want it to be a resolution, so you can't go and remove it again.
Well, by making an official.
Look, I, I'm a believer in.
Again, there's a motion and a second.
Let me finish talking, let me finish talking. It's the people's building. It's not Mayor Parisi's building, it's not your building, it's not my building.
We don't name buildings after. That's okay, yes, we are.
That's your opinion, Mayor, and, uh, the council would like to take a vote now.
No, we're, we're putting it out.
Well, I am not gonna be responsible for the backlash you get from the town, would